We will now call the meeting in the Waco City Council on February 1st, 2020 to order at 3:02 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, did you already adjourn the 2:00 meeting?
I apologize, I did not do that. Thank you, Trish. We will, there being no further business, we will adjourn our meeting at 3:00 PM, excuse me, 3:02 PM from our previous specially called 2:00 PM meeting. And we will, we provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one, three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak, if you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is able to be brought to you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on a work session item? If not, then we will recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon to each of you. We do have one change on the agenda today, at least one, and I wanted to give interim city secretary Patricia Urban a chance to explain it, and she's passed out an updated election order at your place, I believe. Trish, will you tell us more about that?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You should have at your place a revised copy of Resolution 2022-053 relating to election. The only change, actually, there's two. MCC, the McLennan County District College, will not be having an election this year. There are no positions up this year. Their elections are actually in odd years, so they will not be having an election, so we've taken that out. And the second one is on the exhibit, the actual order of the election. We have placed signatures for all the council members to sign the election order, so don't leave without signing the election order, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mayor and Council, I do have one employee recognition organizational update, and then I believe Jennifer has one as well. But I wanted to start, as you're well familiar, Janice Andrews, our chief financial officer, will be retiring at the end of February after 33 and a half years with the city of Waco. Janice, where are you? I know you're not going to want to stand up. Please.
Stand up!
Please stand up. Janice is just a rock in our organization. She is extraordinarily knowledgeable, and her service and her leadership has served the city of Waco so well. We're in such a strong financial position because of her leadership and the team that she's assembled, and so appreciate the council recognizing Janice, and we wish her a very positive and fruitful retirement. She's definitely earned it. And last year, after she came and told the team she was looking at retirement in the spring, we did launch a nationwide search for her replacement. As you might imagine, CFO position's pretty important in an organization this large, so we did a nationwide search with the intention that we would select a CFO that could have some overlap in time with Janice in her last few weeks. And I'm pleased to report that search confirmed that we had our next CFO actually in-house already, in the person of Nick Sarpey. And Nick, if you don't mind, please move. Nick, he's an extraordinary individual, but he's served in local government positions and state government positions for 14 years now. Started off in the state of Washington in an audit capacity, and since that time, several years ago, he went to work in Surprise, Arizona. He's also worked for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, in budget and auditing roles, and he's been our director of office of management and budget here in Waco since early 2021. And he's really established himself as a leader on the executive team, and I'm very excited to see what he can do on the foundation that Janice and her team have created. So, Nick, thank you for taking on this new role, and Janice, just thank the world of you and wish the best for your time as well.
I'll just say really quick, just to echo that, Janice, thank you so much for all that you've done. It's been so meaningful to have you. On behalf of the council, we're thankful for you, and Nick, we echo Bradley's words. We're so excited to have you in this role.
Thanks, Mayor. At this point in time, I wanted to turn it over to Jennifer Ritchie for the second meeting in a row. She's got a new employee announcement.
Thank you, Bradley. Matt, if you'll stand. Mayor and Council, Matt Boyle has joined our office as of yesterday. He's been licensed to practice law since 2003 and served in multiple district attorney's offices in central Texas, coming to us from the Hill County District Attorney's Office. And so, his career has been focused on criminal law, but we're going to convert him to a civil lawyer, and he's going to be handling planning, property management, the zoo, airport, and open records, and so I'd like to welcome Matt to our office.
All right, Mayor and Council, on the agenda today, we have three informal reports. The first one is informal report 043, and it's our first quarter financial report as well as Public Funds Investment Act report. And as you dive into that, if you're interested, it shows the beginnings of a very strong fiscal year in the first quarter. We had revenues at $13.3 million more than last year and $9 million more than budgeted, so we're off to a good start, for sure. I think they'll be in future quarters, you know, that torrid pace would likely slow down. General fund expenditures are more as well, primarily generated by transfers out being done earlier this year than prior years, as well as increased salaries and benefits as a result of establishing the base wage at $15 an hour for all city employees. We did see strong results in hotel motel occupancy taxes, which are trending up strongly, having exceeded last year's amount by more than $705,000, as we're continuing to see a rebound in tourism in the region. And we're starting to see a rebound in attendance over at the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame as well, which is very positive. So, any questions on the financial report? I do have something I need to say about the investment report, which is very, thanks, Nick, very detailed. So y'all just hang with me on the investment report for a moment, because it's evidently statutory required that I say this. Overall, the total investment portfolio for the city is $532,800,000, which is a decline of nearly $1.3 million from the $534 million reported at the end of last quarter. The city's investment portfolio for the quarter yielded .249% compared to the 180-day treasury yield of only .1%. The city's average weighted maturity is at 309 days compared to 304 days at the end of the prior quarter, and the city generated investment earnings of $335,000 for the quarter. Very technical. Did I get it right, though? Okay, all right. Any questions, Council, on that informal report?
Holmes here. I'll just comment that it's, looks like a great first quarter. Our revenues are ahead of budget and ahead of year-over-year, and we are containing our costs also on a year-over-year and a budget basis. There's some formatting questions I have that I'll follow up before the next budget and audit meeting. I won't bring them up here, but it's a nice little report, and I think every quarter of this thing gets a little more sophisticated and a little bit better, where now we have each major, the general fund, and then some comments on that, each major utility fund, and some comments on that, and each of the major, like the Zoo Golf, Ranger, Convention Center. And that makes it easier for me anyway to kind of flip through it and see where the points of departure are from year-over-year and budget. And I looked at it in detail, and it looks, everything looks like it's in great shape. I did notice, too, that we're now tracking our new utility fund, the drainage fund, and that seems to be, again, not, it's not super huge numbers, but at least it's funding dedicated to fixing up the, repairing the city stormwater system, which I think we've tried to dedicate utility for that for a number of years here. So I see that working, working well. So, to me, everything looks great, and I'll follow up with questions before the next budget audit.
Sounds good. All right. Our second informal report is informal report number 44. It's an update on low-income housing tax credit program applications. Each year, the city does receive some level of interest from developers in this space, and as a result, in 2020, the city council adopted a policy that guides the process by which developers request resolutions of support. The policy guides the community input process, as well as requires developers to provide key information to the city about their proposed developments. The IR notes, we do have three developments that have requested resolutions of support this year, and kind of gives an introduction to each request. The next step in the process I wanted to highlight is we will have a discussion on February 8th at the city's Budget and Audit Committee, when staff will present information, more detailed information about each development, and we'll be seeking your guidance as we would need to bring resolutions of support for one to three of those projects at your meeting on February 15th. And the final informal report I have for you today is informal report 45, and it's an update on the staff's efforts to create our first neighborhood academy, including a delayed start until the fall of 2022 from its original start date of the spring of '22. Real excited, neighborhood engagement team, I don't know if Mallette's here, she, yeah, wave at, yeah, let's give Mallette some kudos, too. They're doing a phenomenal job of creating a new program, Neighborhood Academy, that essentially is going to bring resident and neighborhood awareness and knowledge from every city department and learning about what the city does to keep our services going, and how they can also get more involved in the future. So certainly very thankful for Mallette's work. I felt more comfortable in waiting until the fall, given uncertainty around various things, including people's feeling comfortable with in-person meetings or not. We intensify, each one of these sessions will be multiple hours long, and in some cases, in close proximity to one another. So, the fortunate side of that, the delay until the fall allows us to consider an online version of the class, which we'll be working on over the next few months, as well as a Spanish-language version of the class. So it gives us, that extra time gives us an opportunity to consider some added amenities there.
Thank you so much for highlighting this, and to Mallette for all of this great work. The organizer and me is so excited about this. Stacey Abram tells us that if we want to see civic engagement, it has to start with civic education, and so I think this will be so incredibly helpful in giving a baseline foundation for our residents to know what some of these major departments do and how to engage with them. Something I would love for us to consider, in addition to having that Spanish component, potentially eventually having an asynchronous self-paced session for folks that can't give this kind of a time commitment, is considering adding one last session that's like a so-what session. So you've learned all of these things, and now how do you then implement this incredible information so you feel confident to come to a meeting like so many residents are today, so you feel confident to give a public testimony in a public hearing, so you know the process of how you decide to file and run for office? I think one last wrap-up piece of this is the action, these are the specific goals that some folks have set, I think could be a really helpful way to tie this up now that we have a little bit more time on our hands.
Good. Thank you for that feedback. We'll, I'll look forward to hearing what Mallette and Rolando come up to address that. Those that are standing at the back, we do have seats up front, and so please, come on down. Clint Peters is up there. He's really, probably the best planning director around, so you can sit next to him. We do have one public hearing on the agenda today, and actually Clint Peters, our director of development services, will be covering that here in a moment in the work session. And then resolutions, I was going to simply highlight two of the 15 on your agenda today, the first being Resolution 056, which approves several items under the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the city, including our election of the standard allowance under the ARPA coronavirus state and local fiscal revenue funds program for $10 million to replace lost public sector revenue. Additional step is amending our ARP funding plan to align the usage of existing and future ARPA funds with the final rules that were posted and published in January 2022, and details of that alignment are in Exhibit A of the agenda item. And then finally, the last piece, which I'm excited about the first two pieces, but the final piece probably more excited, it's approving an interlocal agreement with McLennan County, or McLennan Community College for an amount not to exceed $1 million to assist with MCC's lost revenue due to the public health emergency related to COVID-19. And I know we're joined here by several representatives of MCC staff, as well as, I think I saw their board chair, Dr. McCown's here, president, and Stephen Benson, who's, I'm going to butcher his title, but he's the wizard, as Dr. McCown calls him, financial wizard. And then, of course, board chair K. Paul Holt is here. I, I'm pleased to put this resolution forward because, you know, I'm a product of community college. I'm sure many in the audience are, and I just know how important MCC is to our region and our goals of economic development and sustainable community development. So pleased to put this forward today, and pleased for MCC's attendance as well.
Thank you, MCC, for being here, and just, you know, we're so blessed to be in this moment where we have such rich and robust partnerships across our community with stakeholder organizations like MCC. And the economic opportunity, the financial security, and the quality of life improvements that come from having an institution like MCC in our community is of great magnitude. So I'm just very thankful for our partnership and look forward to continued partnership in the years ahead.
All right, and the second resolution I wanted to highlight today is Resolution 066, which authorizes the purchase of seven total vehicles to serve five of our city departments for a total amount not to exceed $397,485. The purchase includes two fully-electric vehicles, as well as three hybrid vehicles. And the reason I'm highlighting this is it's the first time when we've used our new acquisition approach for vehicles, that we've had a dealership propose an EV vehicle that we did select. And so highlighting this because it feels like we're, we've kind of broken through the ice here, so to speak, if you like the pun there. Does everybody know what an ice, a conventional vehicle? That was a pretty good one. I don't know, Dale, Dale?
Dale.
Dale Fissler's here today, and he's feeling the weight of being witty. You're doing great. We're excited to have those, that process work to result in the acquisition of two EV vehicles there. Ordinance-wise, we have six on the agenda. Two are first readings. Ordinance 068 is an ordinance authorizing a developer participation in infrastructure cost-sharing agreement with Cooper's Real Estate Investment Corporation, which will result in an oversizing of public improvements in accordance with our water and sewer master plans. This item also provides for the design and construction of water system improvements to extend the city's water system to Highway 84 at Valverde Road, and allows for the reimbursement to the city for that extension. Our second ordinance is ordinance 069, and it's also a first reading, amending ordinance 2024-56 to authorize the use of signature for Nick Sarpey as director of finance in accordance with the city charter. And if there's no questions, that completes my report. Any other questions? Questions for Bradley? Consent agenda will include resolutions 2022-53 through 2022-67, except for Resolution 58, in which council member Palmer is disqualified. Are there any other items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, the next item on the agenda is work session 2022-46 through 48. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
All right, we're going to start with Mr. Clint Peters in a discussion of our planning public hearing agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is the continued public hearing from our last city council meeting, that we received the petition, and so I wanted to give you a refresher on that, and then the results of the petition on the requirement for the supermajority. And so this is a public hearing on a request at 5601 Oakview Street for a short-term rental type one and R-1B zoning. This is, short-term rental type one is a short-term rental where the owner, it is owner-occupied residential property, and the short-term rental tenants is one group, and the owner is on-site when the property is rented out for a short-term rental. This is a 3.1-acre resident, single-family residential lot in the Mountain View Neighborhood Association, just near the Mountain View Elementary and Mountain View Park. R-1B zoning, there are a couple of other STRs that have been approved in the general area. You can see those SDR twos and some, and SDR one. And then here is the outcome of the petition. You can see on the map, all the red stars are property owners that signed the petition in opposition, and that did meet that 20% threshold that triggers the supermajority requirement of city council. So it will require a five out of six votes to approve this tonight. There were a couple of cards submitted in support as well, and those are those represented by the green star. This is the property from Oakview. Like I said, it is on a large acreage property. The house sits pretty far back, and then the little cottage that they're wanting to rent out is behind the house. And then here's a site plan that shows that. Here's the house, and then here's a little cottage on that. Plan Commission did recommend approval of the request. Between the Plan Commission meeting and city council, staff did add an additional, recommended adding additional condition to city council, that the STR would be limited to that one cottage and not any other building. That's all we have.
Any questions for Clint?
Thanks, Mayor. Next work session's going to be a discussion of Waco cultural arts facilities feasibility study. Going to invite Fiona Bond from Creative Waco, and as well as Alex Keen from Keen Independent Research to the table. We're excited to introduce them and have them here, as the council's well familiar, and the city engaged with Keen in the fall of 2019 to conduct this feasibility study for a performing arts venue in downtown Waco. And obviously, that was interesting timing to launch that study, and it kind of got derailed for a moment due to COVID, and Alex and the team have been very helpful to continue the work, as well as Fiona. I'm excited to hear their findings today, and certainly from the view in the room, there's a lot of others that are excited to hear about it as well. So Fiona, if you'll take it away.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, City Manager Ford, thank you, Mayor Meek, and council members. Thank you to our community members who are here today. It's really great to see so many people here. We really appreciate this opportunity to hear from Alex. I'm thrilled so many of our arts leaders and community leaders have been able to join us. You may be glad to know we did not go with Plan A, which was to present this in the form of a flash mob. It would, as it turns out, have been a wee bit hard to squeeze in, and is not the best format for presenting day one. We can maybe try that later. Excuse me. This research process began with conversations back in 2018, though actually the question about performing arts facilities for downtown Waco has been a topic of ambition for our community for a generation. I want to introduce you to Alex Keen of Keen Independent Research, presenting today. He and his team won the competitive bid with city of Waco to undertake this work back in summer of 2019. They've managed to conduct robust and really useful study despite the obvious challenges of a global pandemic. Before he starts, I wanted to make sure to extend thanks to the terrific community working group that worked with Keen Independent and helped navigate this study. That is former city manager Dale Fissler, who's here today, cultural district co-chairs, council member Andrea Bearfield, and Creative Waco board chair Nick Alvarado. Team members John Diva, John Kennard, who's here, Lisa Sheldon, who's here, Chris McGowan, Bob Sarenka, and Dustin Chapman was representing McLennan County. And we also want to thank our creative industry leaders, and especially the performing arts community, who weighed in on this and whose ideas and wisdom are a really essential component of this report. From the city side, our profound thanks to city managers Wiley Stem and now Bradley Ford, deputy city manager Deidra Emerson, assistant city manager Lisa Blackman, and economic development staff Mallette Harrison and Rhonda Sullivan. We really appreciate that all of you kept this process a priority even when the tyranny of urgent concerns made that a hard. This feasibility study was commissioned to ask three really important questions. The first, is it feasible to build and sustain a performing arts center in downtown Waco? Spoiler alert, the city's contract with Keen baked in an exit strategy if the answer to that question was doubtful, so you would not now be listening to a full report if that were the case. Secondly, if feasible, what characteristics should a performing arts center have? Keen looked at what arts infrastructure and programming we already have, what we could and should have but don't because we don't have the appropriate facilities, what our current and future market can sustain, the best fit for where we're at and where we're going, and some guidance as to how much that would cost to build and maintain. And then finally, what are the next steps we would need to take in order to turn ideas into opening night? Before Alex begins, I wanted to revisit why Keen Independent Research was commissioned to undertake this study in the first place, because, just because something can be done, of course, does not necessarily mean it should. Among the cities that Waco considers its peers, we're the only one without an anchor community-owned downtown performing arts facility. It's become a quality-of-life signal for the talented people and companies that we hope to recruit and retain, and so it's at least worth asking, is this something we should have? Creative Waco's research back in 2017 showed that when people participate in arts programming in our downtown core, our cultural district, they spend three times more over and above the ticket price than they do if they attend an event or program at one of our campus, church, or sports facilities. And that's because when people attend a cultural arts activity downtown, they're much more likely to purchase a meal, drinks with friends, an impulse buy from a local vendor, an overnight stay, all those economic impact add-ons that seem very natural when you're immersed in a vibrant arts and entertainment district. If you talk to board members from Waco Symphony, which you can, or our theater producers, which you can, because they're here, music producers, dance schools, film festivals, they're here, too, and anyone involved in programming arts, in performing arts programming in our community, you'll quickly learn that lack of appropriate, accessible, acoustically-designed, and modern performing arts facilities are the single most limiting factor to growth. That prevents growth, development, and professionalization of every single art form. And at the same time, we know that people in our community crave and invest in quality performing arts experiences beyond what we can currently accommodate. Alex and his team learned that 95% of people in our community surveyed spend their money outside our community to do just that. Alex will be saying more about that leakage in his report, and that's not even counting the visitors who come here seeking great cultural experiences that could stay for an extra meal, shopping experience, or hotel night if there was more on offer. When our community has standout excellence of national or international significance, we've started getting really good at making that part of our identity as a city, creating the right infrastructure to leverage and grow that success to new levels. When Waco's schools have programs that win national recognition, when Baylor beats every other program in the nation to bring home the trophy, that's worth spotlighting. One of those standout areas of talent is performing arts. Baylor Symphony has won the national championships for five years in a row. I want to recognize maestro Stephen Hyde for that. The Waco region was a historically vital catalyst and cultivator for blues music. This city has the top black gospel music research program in the world. Baylor, MCC, and TSTC all have standout technical production teaching for performing arts, film, and digital media. These things are assets, worth bringing to the forefront of our identity and literally putting into the limelight and onto a stage. Finally, when we started this process, the why seemed like a very natural and obvious next step. That was before a global pandemic recalibrated our thinking on all kinds of things. We already recognized that investment in the arts correlates with stronger economic development, better quality of life, enhanced community pride, livelier entrepreneurial culture, better educational outcomes, even reduced crime, and certainly attraction and retention of talent. But now I think there's a new why to add to the list post-pandemic. The arts authentically bring diverse people together to experience connection, delight, growth, truth. Shared cultural experiences stretch us Shared cultural experiences stretch us beyond ourselves into understanding the world from each other's perspective. In this most divisive of times, we need that. We need connective experiences that are uncontaminated by the forces that divide us, and that give us reason to gather in person around powerful music, theater, dance, and stories that give us and our children an architecture for unity, creativity, and hope. So it's my pleasure to hand over to Alex to present this feasibility study. Alex, thank you so much for the work you've done and for bringing us to this point and being here today.
Thank you, Fiona. You're a hard act to follow. All right. Just make sure I get this set up right. Once again, I'm Alex Keen. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Keen Independent Research, and we'll start digging into our presentation here. So just a quick overview. So Fiona already talked a little bit about our key questions. So basically, is it feasible to build and sustain a performing arts facility in downtown Waco? If it's feasible, what characteristics should a new performing arts facility have? And then what are the next steps from here for implementation? So just kind of, to begin here, this is not just me, it's a whole project team, starting with our, our key partners at the city of Waco. City leadership has just been absolutely amazing through this process, and very, very, very available as we've, as we've gone through it over the course of several years now. We couldn't have gotten to where we are with the study without Creative Waco and Fiona's help. It's just an amazing asset that Waco has, and in our other work, we often talk about Creative Waco as a beacon. The Waco Arts Working Group, many of which are here, and then, you know, obviously Keen Independent Research serving as the prime consultant. We also had with us, as sub consultants, theater consultants collaborative, National Theater Space Program experts, Victor Gottman Performing Arts Facilities Planning, National Theater Operations Experts, and Venue, National Venue Cost Consulting Experts. So it was a, it's a big team, but we, we got to the finish line with lots of disparate parts. So let's start off with the question, is it feasible to build and sustain a performing arts facility in downtown Waco? Well, there's a couple of things to look at. So we do, we do an environmental scan, we figure out, what do you already have here, right? What's your inventory? We do our market analysis, and then we talk to your community, and those are some of the, the key things that we do to, to answer that feasibility question. So talking through an environmental scan, so I've actually been to Waco a lot, I've spent a lot of time here, and it feels like, for me, as a consultant, like second or third or fourth home, because I do so much traveling, but the, it's, had the opportunity to really tour your spaces and learn a lot more about them. So most of your facilities are smaller. We're going to talk about seat count a lot today, 500 seats or less. But your larger facilities include the Waco Hippodrome Theater, which is at 950 seats, and that's privately owned and operated, your Midway Performing Arts Center, which is 1,100 seats, and it's focused on ISD needs, Waco Hall on the Baylor Campus, which is 2,200 seats, and has been reported at full capacity, the Grand Sonic Lodge of Texas, which is 3,740 seats and is designed for large meetings and gatherings, and the Extraco Events Center Arena, which seats up to 9,000 and, and not designed for traditional performing arts, although all of these, over the years, have facilitated some types, type of performing arts events. Specific to, you know, Baylor, there's a lot of performing arts facilities. They're, they're very focused on academic programming and educational priorities, and have limited capacity for growth. Waco Hall, which was funded by the, the residents of Waco many years ago, owned and operated by Baylor, is fully programmed and does not have capacity for additional, you know, outside tours and that type of stuff. They do some, some great work with the symphony. And certainly, what we've learned through this process, specific to Baylor, is parking is a challenge on, on any university campus, and there's also, specific to Waco Hall, some amenities issues which are difficult to solve. You know, you have a national tour come through, they have some specific expectations about back-of-house space, your audience has specific expectations about the front-of-house space and, you know, amenities. And then we've also learned that you do have few smaller kind of black box performing arts incubator spaces in Waco. There's not a lot of space for your smaller organizations to grow, and that may be impacting the growth of your performing arts community. So, so kind of going a little bit further back, we have our Waco region, so it's the central Texas region, where does Waco fall within that? We certainly think about this from a standpoint of, we never want to build something that there's already a market taking care of it, right? And so if you think about this from a regional standpoint, so obviously you have Dallas, Fort Worth, and soon to be Frisco, you have Austin, College Station, and these are, this is, it's a, there's a lot of cities in this region, but Waco is well positioned to be, you know, quite, it's quite far away. And what we've learned through this process, talking to your residents, is when, when someone does want to go seek out high-level sort of national touring acts, they go, they drive north or they drive south. There's, there's no, there's no opportunity for seeing one of those national tours in Waco. So that's kind of that market leakage, right? Fiona talked about that a little bit. And the other thing that this, this really shows is, well-positioned within the region to be a stop on a national tour. So we think about that, specific for that, the national touring component, which is separate from your, your local community organizations. But we definitely wouldn't, you know, recommend building a performing arts center that's, you know, at a larger scale in Austin. Austin has a lot of performing arts centers. So this regional map is very important. And then we drill down a little bit, we want to learn about your population, where do they live? And so you'll see, we have a primary, secondary, and tertiary marketplace, sort of that 10-minute drive time. I understand, I've been driving around Waco, I know traffic is tough right now with all the construction, but 10-ish minutes, that 10 to 30-minute drive time is your secondary marketplace, and that 30 to 60-minute drive time is your tertiary marketplace. And really, when I, when I think about these different marketplaces, they're folks that identify with Waco in some way. They either live in Waco proper, they live in the suburbs, or in the, the outer region they're coming in. The 30 to 60-minute drive time folks, they're coming a couple times a year. They might be coming for a large event around the holidays, or to come see their, their grandchildren participate in a dance competition. The 10 to 30-minute folks are coming on a regular basis, they're coming on the weekends, and that, you know, 0 to 10-minute, down-the-street group of folks, they're, they're coming regularly, they might come on a Tuesday. So you're sort of attracting different markets as you think about these different groups. So with the demographics within these, the primary, secondary, and tertiary marketplace, you know, you have over 100,000 people in that primary marketplace, that's, you know, it's a large number. We certainly see at a national, and when we look at other similar communities, you know, you got carrying capacity matters, how many people do you have in a community? 100, the 100,000 mark comes up again and again when we're thinking about this type of investment. That secondary marketplace, 282,000, and the tertiary marketplace being 800,000. So there's a lot of people in the region. We look at age, there's a strong correlation between age and performing arts attendance. And what I want to see here, as we kind of project out to 2050, and I want to be clear, this is your Waco metro area, it's not just Waco proper, we don't want to see a big decline in, in your older generation, and what we're seeing in 2050 is a fairly stable population in your older generations. So that's, that's indicative of a future demand for strong, for performing arts. And it's really important to think 30 years ahead when we're building new infrastructure of any kind, especially performing arts centers, we don't want to be replacing, you know, a very expensive piece of infrastructure in 20 years because we didn't build it, right? And we look at our, we look at demand, so this is based on a model that we've put together using survey of public participation of the arts data from the National Endowment for the Arts. And what I want to see here is, is strong positive growth, and you can see as kind of 2020 is the baseline, that's why it's zero, it's the baseline. Going into 2050, we're looking at somewhere between 12 and 20% growth in, in different art forms. Of course, the pandemic has had an impact on this in the, in the short term, this model doesn't take that into account, but we're very hopeful, based on what we've seen in the last, you know, 12 months, that demand will recover. Of course, Omicron has made that challenging, but, you know, who's had a crystal ball through any of this? We certainly are hopeful, and historically, you see demand and attendance coming back after these types of serious incidents that we've all been through. So we also, we did some benchmarking, we looked at communities that have sort of similar population levels. I want to be clear, there's no community quite like Waco, you all know this, living here. It's a, it's a really unique community in a, in a really positive way. But we looked at the Sandy Springs, Georgia, Columbus, Georgia, Lubbock, Texas, Eugene, Oregon, and Bryan College Station, and in each of these, we can learn different things from them. And you'll see different seat counts, as well as secondary-stage seat counts.
You don't mind if I stop you real quick? On the two Georgia, are those part of a larger metroplex or larger metro area? I'm sorry, Josh.
No, I was about, I was about to clarify that. Hi, hi. So Sandy Springs is, it's part of Atlanta, and it's a little bit, we use it as a different kind of benchmark, because that is an interesting model that's, that's talked about in our report a little bit, but it is around 100,000, it's just part of Atlanta Metro. Obviously, Eugene, Lubbock, Columbus, and Bryan College Station, they're more, yeah. And we looked at, we tried to look for communities that had universities, which was important, and then at similar population sizes, either for Waco now or Waco into the future. It's a great question. And so you'll see on this graphic, the horizontal line is the current population of these communities, and then your, your vertical bars are Waco's growth over time. And again, this is the metro area, you might surpass these growth numbers, I'm sure you're looking at internal data that might be different than what we have access to, but the Texas demographic center thinks, you know, Waco's growth is going to be sustained through 2050, and over time, you're going to get to these different population numbers. So why that's important for benchmarking is, I don't want to pick a city that is extremely different than Waco from a population standpoint when we're doing benchmarking. But each of these communities is sustaining, you know, large-scale investment in, in performing arts infrastructure. We also talked to your community, and Fiona mentioned this a little bit before, we did a virtual workshop and several in-person engagement events through the course of this study. Of course, the pandemic made some of that challenging, but we still had the opportunity to talk to a lot of your community members and arts and cultural representatives. And what we learned is, you know, the folks that we talked to, we asked the specific question, is there enough performance and event space in Waco? 88% said no. So then the, the obvious follow-up question is, well, what do you want? What kind of performance and event space do you want? And that's where you get into some numbers that are different based on the person. So we asked specifically the seat count, a lot of folks are interested in that 500-seat or less space, that, you know, intimate black box space, we talked about that earlier. And then you have a mix of folks that are interested in the 500 to 2,000-seat range. Someday, someone's going to invent a performing arts center that's perfect for everybody, but until then, you know, there, really, I think the thing that you learn within this work is flexibility, right? Being able to do a lot and be nimble with your, with your infrastructure. The quote that stands out to me on this slide is, concerts mean weekends out of town for us. I'd love to see decent artists come to Waco. You know, that's back to that market leakage conversation that we're talking about. You're driving north, you're driving south, you're not staying here for kind of that national-level touring experience. So when you look at all of this, and you kind of go back to the question that we asked, is it feasible? Well, your primary and secondary marketplace populations are definitely at that threshold for dedicated, large performing arts investment. The benchmark communities that we looked at are sustaining that type of investment. Your demand projections show growth in all areas of performing arts over time. Your environmental scan shows limited existing inventory to meet that future demand. Your community has told us that there's not enough existing performance space. You know, we, we're not even touching on the tourism component of this, but having, you know, I like the term sort of stickiness, right? How do we make our, our tourists stay for a little longer? Well, come see a show, right? And then we did kind of follow back up with your performing arts organizations in Waco, and COVID-19 has been a serious impact that they are recovering, and that's, that's really good to hear. So if it is, if a new performing arts center is feasible, what characteristics, characteristics should it have? Well, we asked your community, what do you want to see at a new performing arts facility? And they said everything. They want to see theater, they want to see music, comedy, visual arts, Broadway. And so that tells me, I'm going to, I think I used this term earlier, multipurpose, right? It can't just be really good at one thing, it needs to be really good at facilitating nearly all types of arts and culture, and, and any types of public gathering as well. And another key kind of consideration of feasibility is, who's going to use the space? So we can't necessarily make new arts organizations exist overnight. And, and what's really exciting about Waco is, with the new, with new performing arts investment, there's certainly, you know, we've, we've illustrated the, the opportunity for national, regional touring acts to come through with a mix of programming, but we also have, you know, really strong local potential resident organizations. Baylor University has already shown support with $20 million potential investment in a new performing arts facility. McClellan Community College, Texas State Technical College, Waco Civic Theater, the CBB, Waco ISD, and Waco Symphony Orchestra have all shown some type of interest in participating in a new performing arts facility. You also likely have additional nonprofit community users use the space, and then commercial users as well. You know, performing arts facilities are great for not only supporting your local arts and culture and bringing in national touring acts, but there's also a commercial component, whether it's corporate rentals, or promoters that want to come in and put something on. It's, there's really so much opportunity in that space. So what does that lead to when we try to put all these different groups into one building? Well, we think there's a sweet spot at 1,500 seats, and that would be kind of a multipurpose facility at 1,500 seats. We think a balcony is really important in an orchestra pit. With 1,500 seats, no existing Waco inventory is replaced, we're not replacing something that already exists. A really key consideration of 1,500 seats is that national touring acts can be profitable with that number. You get a lot smaller, and they can't be profitable, and they won't come, so that 1,500-seat size is attractive to them. Acoustics comes into mind with 1,500 seats. When you get a lot bigger, it becomes a lot more costly to manage acoustics, and 1,500 seats is a good size to make sure that the space is acoustically pure, especially for your academic and local arts organizations that really want that. And then, can, can organizations grow into that space? Can they grow into that size? And we think 1,500 seats is, is reasonable, and with a balcony, you can choose not to sell the balcony and cut your seat count down a little bit. You can get down to, you know, 900 to 1,000, which may be more feasible for certain, certain organizations. We also think the inclusion of administrative offices, catering spaces, dressing rooms, all the things, amenities that we would expect, you know, back-of-house, front-of-house business operations, we'd expect for, you know, a world-class performing arts center. And then there's also a consideration for potentially putting a media and broadcast studio in a new facility, and that could support your film and television economic development, which is an emerging market in Waco. These types of spaces could be included as well. So where does that lead to for your, your, your space program and cost? Well, at 1,500 seats, you're at about 95,000 gross square feet, so it's a big building. We certainly talked about the multipurpose room and the media broadcast studio, and when you kind of get, drill down to cost on, on the program, we're looking at somewhere between 70 and 100 million. It's certainly been challenging through the pandemic with, you know, shortages in labor and rising, you know, inflation. It's, the number's been a little difficult to pin down, but we, it certainly depended on square footage, seat count, amenities, you know, location, where you put it, the site modifications and phasing and other considerations. And if you, you know, choose to add a multi-use space, the black box space, or the, the film studio, that certainly adds cost and value, so those are future considerations. How do you fund it? A really important question. We think that it's going to be funded in a, in a variety of ways, sort of a combination approach, with tax increment financing, the partnership with Baylor for $20 million, partnerships with other governmental and academic institutions, potential private capital campaigns, there's certainly an opportunity to go out to your, your philanthropic community and ask for support, and then other capital funding tools as well. So one of the things we see in our work is, cities will go build a new performing arts center, and then if they're very, they, the operational considerations of, you know, paying the bills year over year can be very challenging, and we think it's very important for the council to consider this and be mindful of it. We, we looked at several different models, we looked at a nonprofit owner-operator model, and we looked at a nonprofit owner-venue-management company-operator model. There's other models where the city retains the asset and hires a nonprofit or for-profit entity to operate it. There's, there's several different models for how you, how you do this. Any of the models will be designed to generate revenue while also supporting your local arts organizations. And the numbers change a little bit depending on exactly who the operator is or who the owner is, but they don't change significantly. We would expect that the estimated income for this space to be about 2.3 million in annual earned income, so that's ticket sales, rentals, and with 3.4 million in annual expenses. And that leaves you with a $1.1 million annual income, annual contributed income needed. It's really normal with performing arts centers that there's some type of deficit, and we'll talk about how you can make that up, but there's, there's many different ways. Anybody who's involved, been involved with a nonprofit knows, that's another consideration on nonprofits, is they need to make up some of that contributed income. This leads you to a 66 to 34 earned and contributed income ratio, which in our world is, is quite aggressive on the earned income, and shows potential success for a performing arts center. So we want to talk about the, the utilization a little bit. So within this 285 events total, we would expect that there's at least 12 events per year that's part of the presenting series, and 15 commercial rental days per year, so that leaves about 27 kind of for-profit, revenue-driven events, with the rest being focused on community users and, and local renters. We would expect that there's a for-profit rate versus a nonprofit rate that's really normal within performing arts facilities, with the nonprofit and academic users paying a reduced rental fee. Pricing is always a challenge. And like we talked about earlier, the operational deficits are normal, and you can make those up with donations from private foundations and individuals, corporate and business sponsorships. Corporations love naming things, they love naming a presenting series, participating in that way. There's certainly precedent for hotel occupancy tax, supporting some of those deficits, and other special taxes, you know, different communities do it different ways. And then I think something that can be worked on soon, depending on how you move forward, is an endowment fund, so, to help some of those ongoing operational subsidies. So what are next steps for implementation after, you know, we can complete our process? So first of all, our feasibility assessment, the study team believes that it is feasible to build a new performing arts center in Waco for the following reasons. First of all, you have strong demand, we've illustrated that in our work, limited supply, your, your existing facilities can't your existing facilities can't do exactly what a new performing arts facility would do. That market leakage, people are driving north and south to get the high-level national touring. The advantageous location, not only from the standpoint of the region where you can be on the way for a tour, right, but also the fact that there are existing sites in Waco that would make a lot of sense. Those positive demand projections and population projections we're seeing. And I think most importantly, demonstrated willing partners. You have existing organizations that are interested in this, they want to participate in it, and it really sets you up for success if you have organizations in place at the beginning of the process. So how do you get from where we are to where we're going? We would recommend to establish a task force of local arts and cultural leaders, city leaders, perhaps council members to participate and kind of drive these next steps. I think it's important to hone in and select a site, and we would recommend that your next step be conduct a basis of design process with rendering. So anybody who's been involved in academics, you might have gone through EdSpecs, so basically start writing down exactly what the building is going to be, and also include rendering so you can start building that community support. Work with your partners to align capital and operational funding needs, select the appropriate operating model that makes the most sense for Waco, and then be building that endowment throughout the process. So what does success look like? So I've had, like I said, the opportunity to come to Waco quite a bit through the past few years. It's a really unique community that's, it's just impressive and certainly serves as a model as I described. Keep that momentum going. You have strong support from your arts community here, and you don't want a feasibility study to sit on the shelf for 10 years, and then you hire the next version of me 10 years from now to go through this process again. Keep that momentum going so you don't have to replicate the work. Know the opportunities and challenges, go in with open eyes, right? Don't be surprised along the way if you, you know, some of the funding considerations, for example. We think inclusivity is very important, be inclusive from the start. Everybody should feel at home in this new performing arts center. There should be something for everybody, and that starts with making sure that everybody feels like they have a seat at the table. And follow a process, we've illustrated a process in our report, we talked about a process today. We think it's important to just keep things going now so you don't lose that momentum that really seems to be here. So with that, I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to present today. Certainly want to thank Fiona, Creative Waco, and city leadership. It's been an arduous process through the pandemic, but we got here, and I think the work's better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Holmes here. I'll kind of start for a great presentation, and I appreciate the effort here. It's easy to get excited about this project. I mean, and I'm not saying this would go downtown, but all the things we have going on the riverfront right now with the Catalyst project right on the cusp of being built out, the Bader Pavilion possibility as we work on the details of that, and just doing whole-scale upgrades on the riverfront and university parks. Again, this is exciting to maybe think that this is another piece of the puzzle that makes downtown Waco the best downtown in the state. Great report. I like how it started not assuming that we needed 2,500 seats, but basically, let's figure out what size does this need to be, and getting it the right size and going with quality over quantity, and not betting so much on build it and they will come kind of a deal, which I'm not a huge fan of, particularly when we're using taxpayer funds to get it going. And then how you had it scientifically gauged the anticipated use, I think that makes sense. 1,500 seems about right. I like how this fits into other venues that are relatively new here. McLean Stadium for venue and entertainment purposes, the Pavilion, you know, Convention Center, Performing Arts Center. It seems like then you have a host of possible locations for different entertainment venues to come to Waco. And it's always been hard for all of us to, when we went to see, there's top quality here in Waco, don't get me wrong, it's fantastic, I love everything that happens here, but for us to have to go to Dallas to see something, or to Austin to see something, and for that same entertainment not to come to Waco because there's not a facility, kind of, we're shortchanging ourselves. So this seems to fit a spot that's kind of in the middle of that range of venues. I like the aspect that, where you touched on a little bit, the community engagement, community outreach, and the educational aspect of it, getting the community involved in this initiative. The two parts that, you know, we'll continue to kind of look at, study, review, are the costs and the management of it. And obviously, those are the ones we'll be struggling with. That $1.1 million support that we'll need to kind of get this thing going is, I'm glad you identified that. We could have done other things and said, oh, this is a break even, don't worry about it, or we're making a million dollars a year. But I appreciate just the honest study that, you know, this will be something that we'll be supporting, and I think that if it's the jewel of the city, I think everybody will be okay with some kind of support. And the upfront, where we're talking about 70 to 100, right? And it seems like we have kind of earmarked a portion of that. Our friends at Baylor have sort of talked about the $20 million, so I'm excited about it. I'm excited about it. And then the last part is how we manage that, is it a city deal, or do we third-party that out? I think it makes sense to get a third-party manager kind of in place, to really take advantage of national touring acts, somebody that knows what they're doing. And I think that there are folks that do that for a living, professionals, and I think if we engage that kind of service, that we would, we have better chances of getting the right kinds of entertainment acts coming to Waco. Anyway, great presentation, like the objectivity of it, and I'm excited about the next steps here. And I like the fact that we have to establish a task force and kind of start tracking this thing and see where it goes. But thanks for the presentation, guys.
Thank you.
And Holmes, you mentioned in the gender review that you're good for the first 40 million, is that right?
That's right. No, not 50. Good to hear.
Why would you make that public announcement? Alex, Fiona, this is amazing. Thinking about, you know, we just had the winter holidays, and I have a lot of friends that are moms of young children, and I saw so many people dressed up going to Dallas to see the Nutcracker Ballet, or going to see a beautiful symphony. And just the idea that we could have this here locally, and it would highlight and create opportunities for the incredible array of performing arts folks that we have, and create opportunities for those of us with fewer artistic skills to enjoy that is really exciting. Similar to Councilmember Holmes, really grateful to hear the high level of community input. Thank you to everyone that came out. It's so exciting to see a room full of residents. This is certainly the fullest I've seen since I've been on council, so we're glad y'all are here. And Alex, I really appreciate just, it's clear that you've really immersed yourself in Waco. We hear a lot of consultants, and sometimes people will throw around like a Baylor or a Magnolia, and it's like, I really know Waco. And we're like, do you? And it's evident that you do, and that you see the unique-
I've been to Baylor and Magnolia, but-
Yeah, and they're great, and they're assets, but we have so much more going on in our community. So thank you for seeing the unique value proposition that is our community and the unique assets that we have. I'm excited about what this will do for our quality of life. I think this will help us attract great people for all the jobs that we're bringing in, and will make residents be even prouder to call Waco home. So thanks for the work that y'all did.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the study as well, and your presentation of it. And I appreciate kind of the economic realities that you present. And I realize this was a feasibility study and not an economic impact study, but do you have a sense of what a standalone center like this would bring to the community in past studies that you've done? Or have you done economic impact studies?
It's a great question. I'd be hesitant to give a number, and certainly, economic impact studies, you know, you kind of get the number you want to hear, right? So I would be careful with that. What I will say with economic impact, so obviously, you have a job creation, right, with the new performing arts center, people have to run it. You have potentially the dollars that are staying here, right? And then if you bring in more tourists to come and participate, you have the dollars that those tourists are going to spend. So they certainly are economic drivers. The other thing that Councilmember Palmer pointed out for quality of life, one of the things that is talked about a lot in our work is the creative index. I'm sure you've heard that term thrown around, but it's the idea that if you want to attract workers to your city, you need to have certain thresholds for kind of creative opportunities, whether it's performing arts centers or other types of amenities. So certainly, when you invest in new performing arts infrastructure, you're bumping that creative index up and making the community more attractive for folks to want to live here. But specific to the economic impact for this particular building, we did not study that, but they do have an economic impact, and it is substantial.
Thank you.
Fiona, is it different?
Not different, but I was going to add, for what it's worth, we have done some economic impact research into Waco's performing and visual arts and cultural sector. Back in 2017, we participated in a study that was, it was a nationwide study led by Americans for the Arts, and we did a Waco-specific dive into that. We discovered from that that our arts and cultural sector delivers currently, in 2017, approximately $63 million of economic impact. But what we did discover in that is that we're leaving a lot of money on the table because the majority of, almost all of that cascades directly from ticket sales. Whereas in other communities, that equivalent amount of activity parlays out far more into things like meals and accommodation, and into the kind of activity that goes on when you put things in a downtown core, because there are a lot of additional spends that people make when they participate in those kinds of ways. And then we also just did a, you know, a very basic economic impact calculation on the Chalk Festival that we had last year, which had 12,000 people attend. That was, the calculation on that was approximately 2 million. So if you extrapolate that out over a year's worth of robust cultural programming, that's not a small thing for our community. So that's by no means close to saying, here's what the economic impact might look like. But I think just those little snapshots gives some idea about the lost opportunity and the opportunity to be gained.
I suppose I'll take a question here.
We're about to do it again.
Alex, Fiona, thank you so much for the presentation. Clearly, I mean, my participation with Creative Waco, I'm a fan of the arts. Been involved in performing arts my entire life, and worked for a theater in Houston that was in midtown, so I understand the growing pains of what a performing arts venue feels like and looks like. You mentioned some things that we have resources deep here. I do want to, especially since they're in the room, but not only because they're in the room. Yes, Baylor has, excuse me, y'all, I had a rapid test today, I'm good. You know, Baylor has award-winning choral group, but you know, our community college is six-time national dance champion as well. So you know, it's not just one part, it's all of them. And you know, I think those are things that have become important and continue to be important. I mean, I was, dance has been my foundation, and I know what impact it can make, but where do we dance? I know for a fact the city of Waco has lost potential employees because there was not access to a thriving and robust dance community here. And that means something. That was an opportunity that we lost. So surely, we have, you know, we, I know, as this council and previous councils have been committed to figuring out, okay, so how do we do this? And I'm glad Josh, Councilmember Borderwood, mentioned the economic impact, because what Fiona said is exactly right. I mean, while we do have an amazing organization in Waco Symphony, it's not like one can stop and have a beverage or before the, not in it, you know, or around. So it makes a difference because that is money that we're not getting, because we then have to, and you normally go home or whatever. So I think if you present opportunities, people will take them. I mean, we like, when we travel, that's what we do. You go and you eat and you drink and you are married and you do those things, but you're also making that economic impact on that city and community that you're doing those things in. I personally have a wonderful connection to the fact that a performing arts facility would just enhance all the other educational opportunities, because you know, for instance, I mean, I don't know, if you were to mix STEM with art and have a venue that you can marry those two things to do, that creates more opportunities for our young people. It presents a pathway that is visual and can be considered, whereas it may not be because it currently doesn't exist. Lastly, I mean, several of you have mentioned the fact that we are on a, right in the middle of a touring corridor. So there's no reason that national touring entities, groups, whatever, wouldn't stop in Waco. We have the footprint, we have the audience. You know, we are kind of a big deal. And so I think if it's presented in a manner with people who know, you know, how to, just like as we were talking about with the arena, people who know how to work those contracts, and I'm quite sure artists wouldn't mind catching a few extra dollars at a stop to Waco on the way to Dallas or Austin. I mean, makes sense to me. So I think those are the things that a venue, you know, could present and just make sense on it all. Now, one of the things I'm always concerned about is, okay, especially dealing with the background in theater, we've got to find sustainable support for it. You know, because it's not like, you know, the city can just be like, oh, no, we got it, because I think that's not the case. But I think we're, I mean, except for Jim. But, you know, we have the opportunity to create arts endowments here, and to use the work and legacies that have been built within our foundation, because there are people who specifically love and want to enhance and advance the arts. And so I think if we, you know, figure out who those people are, continue to cultivate those relationships, and, you know, make them respond, you know, a big part of that. And so, and that would train our next generation in how we leave legacy, funding legacy, because, you know, we can be what we see, right? So, you know, we're going to do all those things to keep sustainability at the forefront, because that's the part that doesn't concern me, but I know that's the biggest chunk, because yes, it's, we can, we want it, we see the number, who's paying for it, and how we're going to keep it, because we need to make sure that this is something that our great-grandchildren have an opportunity to better. And they'll say, oh, we're going to renovate the wonderful performing arts center that has been sustained in Waco for 75 years, but it's time for us to spruce it up a bit. So all of those things matter. And I know that there are models in cities that have done this in a way that their cities, the city's budget wasn't burdened, but their community was enhanced. And I know with the, just loads of folks that are connected with our major anchor institutions, we can do this. So I appreciate the clarity in this presentation, and I look forward to advancing the task force. I look forward to our community putting their hands on this, because we've got some amazing local artists, and we all know this in this room, but it's time for them to get on the big stage, and so this is one of those opportunities.
Mayor, I'll be very short. I agree with all my council members, all my colleagues. Thank you for this presentation, Fiona and Alex, I appreciate it. My thing is a quality of life issue here in Waco, and I think that's really important for all of us. But again, who's going to be able to afford this, and who's going to sustain it financially? But I think a performing arts center here in Waco would be awesome.
Thank you, guys. Let's go. We're excited about this. I think Waco's continuing to steamroll into further greatness, and our culture of strategy and intentionality is going to ensure that Waco has a premier arts culture and a premier arts scene, and I'm excited for this work. I'm excited to see this endowment set up, as has been recommended. And I think that something I've said before is, the work of building up a city is a team sport, and I look out in this room and see a lot of great teammates. And Fiona, I'm so thankful you're on our team, and I look forward to this team out here helping us raise the money to get this project over the finish line. There's an A-team of people out here in our audience today. And so I know that we're going to be able to achieve this dream, that it'll be a reality, but we're going to have to all roll up our sleeves and go out there and hit the pavement to raise some money, and I'm excited for that. I'm also, I share some of the- I'm also, I share some of the discussion on the excitement around not only the quality of life impact, but also the economic impact that building on our arts, culture and quality of life amenities, that is substantial. The economic impact of building out something like a cultural arts venue like this is going to have a substantial impact. So I'm very supportive and excited of this. I did have a question. What is the important, you know, you mentioned the, or I think the Baylor Pavilion has come up. I had a question around the importance of development nearby that pavilion and potential synergies that might be available to that.
I think there are potential synergies. I certainly don't want to put the cart before the horse and get ahead of those conversations. But I mean, the obvious location for a new performing arts center is somewhere along the Brazos River and, you know, likely between Franklin and the highway, right? But I don't want to create land speculation just by saying that. But, you know, when you look at other cities, performing arts centers are anchors, right? You don't want to, you know, put it off by itself and try to build around it. It should, or there should already be some, you know, strong infrastructure and, you know, sense of place, but they also create sense of place. So use it as a way to further improve the river and, like you said, make it around for years to come. I think that's, there's some likely synergies as you've described, but I don't want to get ahead of what you all are going to achieve.
Well, maybe there'll be some salgating for the arts in our future.
You're just setting up that joke, right?
I mean, for sure, for sure, there's an opportunity to have deep synergies with other things that are going along with any, any part of our core downtown development. We know parking always comes up as a major issue. If that can be shared, that's a much more efficient use of space. Operational overheads, even things like preparing the land and doing the engineering work that's required for site development, transportation, parking, technical expertise. I really think one of the standout opportunities for our community is to become an anchor for the development of technical expertise and early career experiences for people who do things like sound, lighting, film and digital media. These are such transferable skills. They are practiced to their highest degree when they go hand-in-hand with performing arts. If we can become a go-to cluster place of expertise for those early career and often non-traditional career pathways, those people can feed into every other industry in our community and that's a win for everybody. So synergy starts with where the ground is and where the land is, but I think it cascades far beyond that into the benefits for the rest of our community too.
Well, guys, thanks so much for being with us today. This is exciting to have some action steps to take and we look forward to moving forward with this.
Thank you so much. May I mention to our arts community that as we, as we exit, that we will be taking Alex to stay classy if anyone wants to grow him there.
Thank you. Yeah, on the public radio. And to everyone here tonight, thank you so much for coming. Your presence is meaningful, it is noted, and we are so grateful for the robust arts community that we do have and supporters for this project. So thank you all for being here tonight. Next, I believe we have a discussion on the Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network Crisis Hub. And we'll let these folks exit as you guys get set up. I know, I just.
You're, I'm putting charges on us.
Going forward. Yeah. You just need to at least like feel them to us if we need a neck comb, like when it hits your head. Hey, guys, thanks for y'all being here. We're going to let these folks exit and then we'll get going. All right, I think we're about, got everyone cleared. So we'll get, get moving here.
All right. Daniel, you know how to clear a room, sir.
I mean, you know.
Daniel, thanks for joining us. Mayor and council, we have Work Session 048, a discussion of Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network Crisis Hub Project. Daniel Thompson has joined us. He's a, if you haven't met him before, he's the Executive Director at the Heart of Texas MHMR. And we also have the Deputy Executive Director, Ryan Adams, at the table here today. We're going to hear primarily from Daniel, I believe, on this presentation. And I'm excited because it's going to cover the planning, design and funding related to a new crisis hub facility, which while people left is probably just as meaningful as performing arts than you in our community. It just doesn't get the same level of attention. So I know the council's excited to hear about this project as well as the enhanced services that a new such facility would bring to our residents. Daniel, you want to take it away?
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate you giving us time with you today. Mayor and council, we do greatly appreciate it. What we are here to talk about does have an economic impact and a quality of life issue that impacts not only just those whom we serve, but the entire community.
Right.
And so we're excited about this opportunity to come before you. What I'm talking about is the Crisis Hub Project, which has been really a long-term goal of a multi-disciplinary team of people. It started with the Behavioral Health Leadership Team, which is comprised of both former and current city and McLennan County personnel. It's also hospital, social service and foundation members, as well as my own organization. And they conceived of this project roughly five years ago. And while it did not gain a lot of steam, it was something that everybody in the community who participated on the Behavioral Health Leadership Team recognized was important because frankly, the facility that we're currently in and have remained in over the years simply is not large enough. And so the, the reason we're here discussing this project is because when, there are limited resources within our community and within the state. And for example, there are 2,500 public behavioral health beds in Texas for an estimated population of 6.9 million mentally ill people. At this point in the situation, we are looking at over 60% of those beds are forensic. And every 21 days, we're supposed to turn somebody out of, out of a jail or emergency department into a state hospital bed. And the current wait time with a waiting list of over 2,000 people is over 450 days. So the chances that we will ever get people out of your local jails into a state hospital facility or out of your emergency department before we are able to improve that situation locally is very slim. And so that becomes our problem. And so it impacts all of our communities and all of our individuals whom we serve, as well as a variety of businesses and agencies. The, on top of that, COVID and the decreasing state resource of public beds only emphasized the need for this, this facility. During the height of COVID, we've had to close down our facility multiple times because we had double occupancy rooms and it's not socially distancing safety measures in place. And so again, this pushes these issues back into where your local law enforcement is unable to take people to the appropriate facilities. We have people who get piled up in emergency departments or end up in an extended period of time in jail. And so again, this is something that impacts our local community. So the new facility that we are looking at will greatly improve that in that it is going to be a 27,000 square foot facility. And when we look at local data, we know that crisis calls and suicide calls with the City of Waco PD increased over an eight-year period 167% and 187%, respectively. That's just two services. That equates to $2.8 million for the City of Waco in law enforcement times for those two services. However, in the last year alone, my agency has spent $5.2 million in crisis services, which is on top of what the county has spent, what the city has spent, what the other municipalities in our area have spent, as well as the other five counties which we serve. And so we really feel like a larger, multi-disciplinary approach is really our best solution. And in front of you are the schematics that we have had produced. And you'll see that it is a much more extensive facility. It will be one of the largest facilities in the state. It will be the most up-to-date. The state crisis standards change on an annual basis. And so we know that we are, we're working very closely with my former employer, the State of Texas, on ensuring that we are always on top of those latest standards. And we're also following national best practices in developing this, as well as part of the efforts of the State of Texas in designing its state hospitals to make it more integrated into the community. The building in the far-left corner is an existing facility on the property my agency has recently purchased this past March. And so the crisis facility is going to be 30 feet away from the administrative hub. And so we're integrating in with that facility because of the importance of it. We will also be able to have onsite crisis triage, onsite medical triage. This corner here, you will see, it's actually a medical clinic and we're engaged with Waco Family Medicine to be our partner in that facility. On the interior parts of the building, we will also have other social providers. We're having conversations with Senecor for substance use disorder programming. We're having conversations with Prosper Waco. I met last week with Chief Victorian about the project that they're working on, on having better care coordination. And so all of these things will come together in providing a better environment for those whom we are charged with serving. So where we currently are in this process is that the crisis facility will have a drop-off facility for law enforcement. We have engaged, as I mentioned, we've purchased the property on Imperial Drive, so it's halfway between both local hospitals. We've engaged Brian Nicholson and George Thornton with Intrepid Designs to be our project manager. We've engaged RBDR, architectural firm, to, who has provided all of these schematics and in our latest renderings, which seem to change not quite so much anymore, but as of yesterday, an additional change to accommodate Waco Family Medicine, which indicated they needed a little more space. And so we're working very hard to make this a win-win situation for all of the partners, as well as our own agency. And then we've finally hired Built Right, again, another local firm that is ready to break ground next, in, yes, next month. Today's February 1st. And so we're very excited about where we're going. And on top of that, when I started in 2019, the agency was not certified as a Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, which is a new federal and state standard that all community centers are supposed to be working toward achieving. The beautiful thing about this new behavioral health model is it is based, it focuses on outcomes. How are we helping Daniel or Ryan improve in their behavioral health? As opposed to, are we seeing them 10 hours a month? It's easy to see somebody 10 hours a month. I don't really measure how the person has improved in 10 hours. And so the new standards will allow us to have better healthcare outcomes. Again, we'll also be working with the other providers, the other health providers. We achieved a new electronic health record, which means more portability, better accessing continuity of care. And we also received a $3.9 million federal grant to expand our CCBHC services. And the reason that's important for the City of Waco is because as it stands right now, when somebody goes into crisis in Boski County or Hill County or Falls, Freestone, where do they end up? They're coming to Waco. They're impacting the local hospitals, they're impacting the local jails. And so part of the expansion project that we're working on allows us to expand our services more thoroughly out into the region. We're also currently working on providing, as a CCBHC, we also have to engage in what's called integrated healthcare. So we're providing a full array of services to our consumers. Locally, here in Waco, we'll be working with Waco Family Medicine on that, that service. However, we're expanding those services in Boski, Hill, Freestone, Line, Stone and Falls. And so it means allowing the folks we serve in those rural counties to be served in those rural counties and hopefully to delay a need to be transported into our local community. We're also working on what is called a sequential intercept model mapping program, which is basically the SIMS map allows us to determine any point in time where somebody can be diverted away from jail. We're going away, we're going one step further to identify steps in which somebody can be diverted away from an emergency department. And so again, we're doing this, one, with Waco and McLennan County first and foremost, and then we're going out to the other five counties that my agency serves. Again, we're doing it from a regional approach, but also focused solely on Waco and McLennan County to ensure that we're able to identify those opportunities to divert away from jail and emergency departments. Having a better coordinated effort amongst all the organizations, ensuring we're all on the same page at the same time. And then identifying the gaps in services, such as the Crisis Hub, and deciding, okay, who can step up to the plate to help cover those gaps or to close those gaps. And then we'll carry that out with the state actually coming in May 25th, 26th to do a regional SIMS mapping, so that this will open us up for more federal resources. And in turn, the State of Texas has reached out to the Judicial Commission on Behavioral Health to start looking at, are there regional court opportunities? And that's come just from our work with McLennan and the City of Waco to see if we can better coordinate behavioral health court services out in the region to again, decrease the impact on our local community. So as you can see, we feel like there is a lot of ground that's been covered. This project started in earnest in December of '20. And I say in earnest because there was an administrative change. I started following Barbara Tate's retirement in August of '19. I started in September of '19. And then we had a little thing called COVID, which diverted our attention to other things. And then we picked up the project beginning December of '20. At this point, we have a very robust timeline. We have, as of yesterday, the project is $11.6 million. It's a little bit increased. I've explained to a number of people what the cost increases have been. There's some city-related costs such as, because it's being, we have locked doors on the facility. And so that means being rated as a hospital-type facility and that requires a generator, which would be roughly 300. and that requires a generator, which would be roughly $300,000. Uh, we had, uh, quite a surprise with roofing materials going up $500,000 two weeks ago. Um, and so, um, we're working very quickly to, uh, to close the gap in funding. At this point, we've got, my own agency has committed 4.6 million in, in, uh, dollars. 3.6 of that are, are operational dollars, uh, a million of capital. McLennan County has, uh, uh, offered 3 million in, in, uh, capital funding. We're asking the city to match that. Um, we've received $500,000 from, uh, Rappaport Foundation, $10,000 from a private donor, and, uh, we continue to work to close that gap of 3.2 in the, uh, current estimated budget. Um, but we are also, as a governmental entity, allowed to raise, um, to issue bonds, and we are working with, uh, municipal capital markets out of the Dallas-Fort Worth area to issue bonds, and that will allow us to go ahead and, and, um, close the gap on, on those increasing, uh, material costs, and, uh, we'll continue fundraising thereafter. Are there particular questions you would have at this point?
Any questions or comments for Daniel?
A quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Adams, for that presentation. Very, very good, and I, I, this, I can get as excited about this project as I can on the, on the previous Performing Arts Center project, because the, the two, the, the two things that just jump out at me here are efficiency and improved results, because, uh, the, uh, multi-disciplinary approach that you're taking, where you get all the parties involved, and, uh, the city, county, the hospitals, law enforcement, uh, Behavioral Health Network, uh, with the bad example of there, there's an incident and, uh, and law enforcement has to go and, and stay with this person, and the person eventually gets incarcerated, and there's really no benefit to the person or the law enforcement or, or the, uh, any party, uh, but where we can use this, utilize this, uh, benefit, uh, I think we have a better result for the, the, the law enforcement, a better result for the, for the individual, and a better result for the community at, at large. I think we kill, uh, or, we have a win-win-win killing several birds with one stone.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, uh, I'm excited about this, and it puts Waco, I think, ahead of the curve on, uh, addressing this kind of, uh, again, multi-disciplinary approach to getting, uh, resolving issues. Um, I'm also excited about the, your mention of the, the six Texas counties, which are the heart of Texas Council of Government Counties, and, uh, Councilmember Bearfield and I both serve on that hot cog board, and so I'm excited to see that we're kind of expanding to serve all of central Texas, uh, there too, but the, great work, and, and it looks like you've got some, the, the funding sort of lined up and the, and the, the process is being put together. Congratulations.
Thank you. I, I was intrigued by Mr. Keen's map, um, and I have presented a similar map where I show that between, uh, basically the same geographic area, we cover from I-35 to, to I-45, and we're, we're the biggest behavioral health authority in that catchment area, and we, we have a wide, uh, territory to cover, and that's a lot of people, and, and so we feel like this is a, we, we have to tackle it as a region.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is, as a licensed social worker sitting up here, I'm incredibly encouraged by this, like Councilmember Holm said, knowing that this is multi-disciplinary and really is evidence-based best practice, having that wraparound case management model, because we are whole people with complicated issues, and so, uh, having the partnership with Waco Family Medicine, um, working with, closely with law enforcement, I think this, we're getting everybody in their right lanes and helping residents with compounding mental health issues weave through a process that can be incredibly arduous and challenging. So, I'm, yeah, this is really exciting. I think too, as a social worker sitting up here, Waco is the hub for the region. I mean, any nonprofit in the community, um, is often serving people that live far outside of Waco or even McLennan County, because this is where, um, the dearth of resources are, and so I think this is really serving Texas, this is serving central Texas. I'm excited for the work, um, and the labor that has gone into creating both these beautiful schematics and all of the emotional and mental labor to creating something that is this thoughtful and cohesive, so thank you, and excited to see this come into fruition.
Thank you.
Yeah, Daniel and Ryan, thank you so much for your time here and your presentation. Uh, as you know, as a appointee to the, to the board, uh, by the county commissioners, uh, it's been a joy to work and, and see the great work that this, uh, your administration is doing in behavioral health here in our community. Uh, as has been said, you know, Heart of Texas, what was Heart of Texas MHMR, now Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network, has been going through, uh, some wonderful, dynamic new changes in the last, uh, few years with the electronic health record. We're in a, a position of rebranding with a new name and new logo, uh, with this nationwide certification, and with just these new approaches to dealing with law enforcement issues, dealing with, uh, local governance, and finding ways to kind of, you know, take, take folks out of what would be a route into the criminal justice system and get them treatment and get them holistic treatment. Uh, and so the partnership with Waco Family Medicine and with McLennan County and the surrounding counties, uh, and all of this innovative work is deeply appreciated by this council, uh, obviously by the board, uh, and by the community at large. So, thank you for your good work. Looking forward to being at the groundbreaking and, uh, seeing this move forward.
Thank you.
Having a community-wide strategy for behavioral health is imperative, and this is a critical step to address this issue, so thank you for this presentation today and for being here. Uh, I had a quick question. You went through the funding model, but could you tell me again how you, uh, briefly how you, the, the funding model for, for this? Sorry to make you, ask you to repeat that.
And I assume you're talking about the construction?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, we have, uh, we have approached several foundations, um, and so, as Daniel mentioned, we got, um, $500,000 from Rappaport, recently got $300,000 from the Meadows Foundation. Um, the county has, uh, committed $3 million from, uh, I believe their ARPA funds for this. As Daniel mentioned, we also had a $10,000 private donation, um, and so on the rest of it, we do have requests out to some other, uh, foundations, um, both local and, and statewide, um, but in the meantime, um, we, we're, uh, working with the Capital Municipal Markets Group to issue the bonds so that we can go ahead and get the ground broken, get going on it, and, and, you know, the idea is to continue to fundraise after that, um, to, to hopefully offset some of those, uh, bond costs that we have, but, uh, we're not gonna let, you know, that gap not being closed yet slow us down, especially as Daniel mentioned with the rising cost of materials and, and all the things that are going on, we gotta, we gotta move forward with it.
That's great.
Well, and, uh, let me just add to that. One of the other, uh, initiatives that we started this past year was, uh, we reorganized the organization and created a governmental and community affairs division, and one of the aspects to that is endowments of foundations. Uh, historically, the agency has not been a, had a very robust fundraising effort. Um, we're working with, uh, Tom Stanton, who in fact is meeting with us tomorrow to, to help us develop that, that strategy, so that will be on top of everything else.
Other questions or comments? Uh, thank you to the foundations who've already contributed, um, to this cause, and I do wanna, uh, thank our Behavioral Health Leadership Team.
Absolutely.
Um, who's played a really, a, a, a local group of community leaders who are devoted to thoughtful, um, uh, responses to behavioral health concerns in our community, um, and thank you to you, Daniel. It's, it's such great, great to have you as a member of our community, um, and the forward-thinking work you're doing. This is a transformational project for our region, so we look forward to seeing it, um, also become a reality, so thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, then we will recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by our interim city secretary at 4:41 PM.
No, hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Number one, real property under Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Number two, economic development under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And number three, personnel under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. City Attorney, Jennifer Ritchie. We're now in executive session at 4:41.